Before we commence the meeting, draw your attention to the fire regulations, which are on the screen behind me. There are no practice fire alarms for tonight, so if the bell goes, please leave the building as quickly as possible. We assemble across the road under the country outside Waitrose. Can I ask everyone, please, to switch mobile phones to silent or to off? And, members of the public, we do understand that, as a committee, matters under consideration tonight can be quite emotive. However, please be respectful of those around you in the public gallery and the committee, and refrain from any booing, cheering, or any other form of disturbance. So we move on to the main business. I'll introduce the officers in front of me. On the far right is... No, not Barry Devlin, sorry. There's Joan, our planning lawyer, followed by Paul McKim, the head of Planning and Economic Development, followed by Flo Taylor, the planning officer responsible for the report tonight, Beth Howden-Smith, the Development Control Manager, and then Paul McKim, the head of... Sorry, wrong one. Patrick Arthur's. I do beg your pardon, Patrick. Development can... Deputy Development Control Manager. So, without further ado, let's move on to the agenda. Item number one: Apologies for absence.
Thank you, Chairman. I've had apologies from Councilwoman Simon Inchboldt.
Thank you very much. Disclosure of interest?
I haven't received any, Chairman.
Thank you. Three. Sorry, Councilman Edwards. That applies to a number of us. Yes, that's the usual exemption. Thank you. Relevant updates to government guidance or legislation since the last meeting. Beth?
Thank you, Chairman. There are none.
Fine. Item four: Performance Against Government Targets. Beth?
Thank you, Chairman. Members see the planning service's performance on the government targets of speed and quality, and you'll see that we continue to perform excellently. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Well, we've already had a site visit to the Georgian Hotel, so that's taken care of. Item A1, WA 2018-0408, Georgian House Hotel, 3741 The High Street, Hazelmere, GU 272JY. It's on pages seven to many, many on your agenda. The proposal is the erection of three dwellings, extensions, and changes of use to the rear building from the hotel bedrooms and spa, used Class C1 to 16 flats. Demolition of the linked building, alteration to the main hotel building to provide a 12-bedroom hotel with restaurant and bar, and new access to the High Street, provision of ancillary parking and landscaping as amended by plans and information received on the 17th of September of 2018, 23rd of January... It says 2018, I'm not sure about that. 29th of the 11th of November, and marketing information received on the 7th of March 2019. And to introduce the application, Flo Taylor.
Thank you, Chairman. I'll just start with the update sheet. Within the update sheet, I've included a proposed block plan. This will appear later in the presentation, but was omitted from the report. So this will just show you how the proposals would be set out on the site. The update sheet also highlights additional representations that have been received, going into some detail about them. Most of these matters have been covered in detail within the officer report, but just highlighting to you points that have been raised. In terms of amendments to the report, just for a bit of clarity, as questions have been asked, in terms of the heads of terms, the education contributions, which were previously sought on the previous agenda report, are no longer sought because they would now be secured via SILL, which has now been adopted, and the recycling contributions would become part of a planning condition. Just some clarity in terms of the report. Page 26, at the top, at the end of the top paragraph, the sentence should read that Lannister House was ultimately concluded as the favoured bidder, as its proposal, stroke bid, met the primary objectives of the administrator as required by statutory obligations to provide the best outcome for the creditors, rather than the best outcome for the Georgian Hotels as stated in the report. As a bit of further clarification, in terms of consideration of the accuracy of the submitted viability reports by Savills and Florax, just to highlight your attention that within the Adams Integra affordable housing viability report as an example, which was commissioned by Waverley, Adams Integra did challenge various financial details which were included. For example, on page seven of their report, they reduced the demolition costs and build costs, and on page 13, they used a lower benchmark value figure, which demonstrates that the figures presented by the applicants have been considered for appropriateness, rather than just used by Adams Integra as presented by the applicant's agents. And on page 32 of the agenda report, in respect of the loss of the existing use section, the first sentence of the second paragraph should read that officers are satisfied that the existing 43-room hotel model as operated is not viable. In terms of conditions, condition 23 has been amended to require the purchase of recycling containers. There's additional two conditions. One, conditions 27 is in respect of hours of construction, it's a standard condition, and additional condition 28 proposed is in terms of a phasing plan. This would give the local planning authority the opportunity to look at the order in which the development on the site was undertaken, to ensure that all elements of the development were undertaken, and to require all to be carried out, so it couldn't be partially implemented. Moving to the presentation. Just looking at the location plan, the site is in a regular shape, and it's located to the western side of the High Street in Hazelmere. You'll know, so if you look at the bottom right-hand side, that north doesn't face top on this plan, which can be a bit confusing. The site currently comprises the Georgian Hotel, which has 12 bedrooms of accommodation within the main Grade 2 listed building, and then ancillary accommodation to the rear with 31 rooms, and also spa leisure facilities in this linked annex block. There's areas of open space, uses both garden space over in the hotel and parking, parking predominantly where I'm pointing now. To the rear of the site, seen on the right-hand side in this image, is the public car park. In the vicinity of the site, there are a number of listed buildings, including Tudor Cottage to the north of the site, here, which would face some of the development proposed to the rear of the site within the car park area. Looking at an aerial photo, you can see where the blue dot is here, this is the main old part of the Georgian Hotel. Where I'm now, this is the large annex building, existing car parking here, Tudor Cottage here, and obviously the public car park to the rear. The site photo is shown now, have been taken by officers when carrying out site visits, both during pre-application discussions in November 2017 and in October 2018, prior to reaching a recommendation on the proposals. Additional site visits have been undertaken by the council's heritage officer, specifically in December 2017, but he's also viewed the wider site on various occasions, both before and after then. Officers have not specifically viewed the site from Tudor Cottage, which is 41A High Street. However, the majority of the time, it is not necessary to view a site from adjacent properties to make a full assessment of impacts. This is common practice, and officers were satisfied, due to the proposals and the distances involved, the assessment could be properly undertaken from within the site and the surrounding conservation area. On this slide is an image of the main hotel, top left. You will note the three-and-a-half-storey nature of the main part of the hotel, over here, and the carriage arch here, through which vehicular access is currently achieved, something which the proposals retain. To the right is an image of part of the hotel on... To the right is an image to the rear of the hotel. And to the bottom is an image of the link extension to be demolished, the ancillary building to which it's proposed to add extensions and convert into 16 apartments. The grassed area to the front will be divided between the retained hotel and the apartments, with some access and parking being created to the side of the ancillary block facing the camera. These images show further images of the ancillary block, a view of the ancillary block when viewed from the Chestnut Avenue car park, and bottom left, the side of the rear block from the High Street. This shows the rear block is not visually dominant from the High Street. The next two pages show images of the proposed site of the three mews cottages. The top image is taken from the northwestern end of this area, looking towards Tudor Cottage. You will note the rear vehicular access to Tudor Cottage through the gates. The proposed three mews cottages would extend across the width of the currently open space with private gardens to the rear. The bottom image shows the plots for the three mews cottages, taken looking away from the Tudor Cottage end. The top image shows a closer view of the listed Tudor Cottage, and the bottom a view northeastwards across the car park towards the proposed location of the three cottages, of which the side elevation would front the car park. Looking at the proposed block plan, this shows how the proposed development would sit within the site. The proposed scheme essentially falls within three elements. Firstly, the refurbishment of the main part of the hotel, to provide a 12-bedroom hotel and restaurant, and modest scale internal and external alteration to facilitate this. The demolition of the existing linked building between the hotel and the rear block, the extension and change of use of the rear block to form 16 residential apartments. Where are the mouse is now, the erection of three four-bedroom mews cottages on the existing overflow car park to the rear of the site, and also changes to parking and landscaping. I've annotated the block plan, showing some distances which have been queried by members. These include a 37-metre separation distance from the nearest roof terrace to the adjacent private garden, a minimum eight-metre separation distance from the mews cottages to the drive area of Tudor Cottage, at this closest point down at the bottom of the screen, and 17.3 metres the main rear garden boundary from the front of the dwellings to the... The dwelling-to-dwelling separation between the mews cottages and Tudor Cottage would be a minimum of 26.7 metres. Parking spaces 12 to 16 in this area would measure 11.97 metres. This would be three centimetres less than for each of the spaces to be 2.4 metres wide, but it's not considered to be significant, and may result from the width of lines on the plan. Notwithstanding, a digital plan has actually been received from the applicant, showing how they would fit these parking spaces in this area. And where I'm pointing now, there is actually an area of vegetation which would be reduced in size to fit it. It's right at the end, so I'll just flick through. Just here, for clarity, this is their extra plan, showing how those spaces 12 to 16 would fit within the site, relocating the existing wall where the mouse is pointing now, and removing shrubbery. This image shows existing elevations to the main hotel, and the second slide, the proposed elevations, the main visual difference relating to changes to fenestration and doors to both the front and rear. This is an image of the existing and proposed rear block. Looking at these images side by side is the easiest way to identify the proposed changes to the existing rear block. The block would be extended to the north-eastern elevation, and would in part include 3.5-storey accommodation, although the existing maximum height of the building would not be exceeded. These extensions would be of a contemporary design to add interest to and improve the appearance of the rear block. Balconies would also be added to increase visual interest, and also provide some private amenity space to the apartments which would not have their own private gardens, or the ground-floor apartments do have their own private gardens. There would be two units, 12 and 16, with roof terraces above the third floor. The applicants have provided some computer-generated images to assist with the understanding of this element of the proposals. To the top are images from the existing hotel garden, and to the bottom, images from the public car park to the rear. Turning to the mews cottages, the proposal includes three two-and-a-half-storey terraced mews cottages to the rear of Tudor Cottage. The elevations of these are shown here. Moving on to the determining issues. The site is in the developed area of Hazelmere, wherein development is considered acceptable, subject to visual and residential amenity considerations. The site is within Hazelmere Town Centre, in a highly sustainable location. The site does have an extensive planning history, and officers are satisfied that the lawful use of the site is a hotel with ancillaries, bar, and parking. In terms of the ability to provide affordable housing, it is considered that this would not be financially viable. The council's housing strategy and neighbouring team requested various alternative scenarios to be run, including for minimal and affordable, comprising two units rather than 30 per cent, and these options did not show that it would be viable to provide affordable housing, and the housing strategy and neighbouring team have accepted this position. The site is located in the conservation area and contains listed buildings within and adjacent. When considering these aspects, it is of note of previous appeal decisions 20 years ago which considered these constraints. There were three schemes considered as part of the appeals, with the plans of these starting on page 39 of the agenda report. Whilst the schemes included development in the area of the ancillary block, this area has now changed, and therefore the conclusions in this regard are of less relevance. However, the 1999 appeals included development proposed on the land to the rear of Tudor Cottage, where the three mews cottages are proposed. Scheme one included a detached house, four apartments, and a garage block. Scheme two was as scheme one but without the garage block or the detached dwelling, and scheme three included four units to the rear of Tudor Cottage in a different configuration to schemes one and two. A full analysis of the differences is set out within the agenda report on pages 38 to 44. Officers note that the inspector at the time considered the open space to make a significant contribution to the setting of the listed buildings and the character of the conservation area, and concluded that all three schemes would cause unacceptable harm to the character and appearance of the Hazelmere Conservation Area as a whole. The proposed dwellings in this area would be of a greater height than those considered unacceptable by the inspector, but would be of a lesser overall scale, bulk, and mass than the previous schemes, and a minimum of 4.9 metres further away from Tudor Cottage than the appeal schemes. In terms of impacts on heritage assets, the council's historic buildings officer has raised no objection to the changes to the main hotel listed building, is neutral about changes to the ancillary block, considering that whilst it would be larger and bulkier, it would be more convincing than the present unconvincing vernacular of appearance. In terms of the three mews cottages, the historic buildings officer considers that their appearance would not be detrimental to the setting of the surrounding listed buildings, including adjacent Tudor Cottage and the hotel itself. Care would need to be taken with the finer detailing, however, this would be secured via condition should planning permission be granted. Officers consider that the proposal would preserve the special interest and setting of the listed buildings, and would not harm their significance. Officers consider the scheme to be different to the 1999 appeal schemes, and are satisfied for the reasons set out in detail in the agenda report on pages 38 to 48, that it would be appropriate to reach a different conclusion to the inspector for the 1999 appeals. In terms of trees, the council's tree and landscaping officers raise concerns in respect to the proposals and impact of them on trees, most significantly the mature oak tree to the rear of the main part of the hotel and near the ancillary block, which may suffer from hard-standing impacts to its rooting area, and the tree and landscape officer considers that this would not conserve or enhance the conservation area. The harm from this element would need to be considered as part of the conservation area considerations. As I've already mentioned, the site is located in the Hazelmere Town Centre Conservation Area, with the rear northwest of the site forming the outer boundary of the conservation area. The council's tree and landscape officer has identified some less than substantial harm from the loss of trees within the site. Officers consider that the public benefits in the form of new housing, business improvements, and viability of the use of the listed building would outweigh the less than substantial harm to the significance of the conservation area. Officers are satisfied that it is also reasonable to reach a different conclusion to the 1999 appeal inspector in respect of the conservation area, for the reasons mentioned in the report, and for similar reasons to those in respect of heritage assets. In terms of highways, access, and parking, the access would remain as existing. However, on-site parking would be adjusted. There would be an under-provision of parking for the hotel element, and a marginal under-provision for the residential element. Officers have included the residential visitor parking spaces in the residential parking numbers, as visitor parking requirement is included within the residential element of council's parking guidelines. The County Highway Authority has visited the site, they've confirmed that today, and has assessed the proposal, and considers that, given the existing on-street controlled parking restrictions in Hazelmere High Street, and the availability of public car parks nearby, the under-provision of parking would not be detrimental to highway safety. The County Highway Authority has raised no objection, but has recommended a number of conditions should permission be granted. The lead local flood authority is satisfied in terms of flooding and drainage subject to conditions, and the proposals would not be materially harmful to ancient woodland. Archaeological impacts would be prevented via a condition, there would be no unacceptable impact on the SPA, and biodiversity conditions would prevent unacceptable harm in this regard. Officers also note that questions have been raised in terms of fire safety, and this has been addressed within Section 12.25 of the officer report. Additionally, Surrey Fire and Rescue Service have been approached in this regard and confirmed that it would be unlikely that a fire appliance would fit through the arch, but that fire appliances can access the car park to the rear, which may give the fire authority sufficient access to the new builds, but that would be confirmed at building control stage if permission were granted. Officers note that the fire appliance's access to the rear block would not be materially different to that for the current rear block, if an appliance can't currently fit through the arch either. Turning to the matters of judgment, the loss of the existing use. The existing use would not be lost, but it would be reduced as part of the proposals, reducing the hotel from a 43-bed offering to a 12-bed offering. Policy LT2 of the Local Plan 2002 seeks to retain visitor-related facilities. The applicants have submitted extensive viability and marketing information, and the viability information has been scrutinised by viability consultants appointed by the council. When considering the loss of an existing use, it is normal practice to undertake a marketing campaign to see if there is an alternative public demand for the existing use. I.e., would another future operator purchase it at a fair market rate? Whilst the applicants have submitted details of a marketing campaign carried out when the hotel was in administration, and the council's estates and valuation service has agreed that it was an appropriate campaign, despite its length, there is no detailed information of the bids received, and whether there were any for a purely hotel use at a reasonable rate. As such, officers consider that it has not been clearly demonstrated that there is no other reasonable public demand for the hotel, which is a partial conflict with policy LT2. The applicants have put forward that there were exceptional circumstances in this instance, and that the material considerations clearly outweigh the non-compliance and marginal conflict with the development plan, and this is a matter for members to consider. Two viability reports have been submitted, one in respect of the viability to provide affordable housing on-site, and one in respect of the viability of the existing hotel. These were scrutinised by viability consultants appointed by the council. These reports have been fully published on the council's website for some time, and as such have been open to public scrutiny. Some concerns have been raised by third parties in respect of the accuracy and credibility of the submissions, and indeed the council's consultants did challenge some and use some revised figures, as I mentioned in the update sheet. A second viability report was submitted and independently assessed, looking at the viability of the existing hotel. It was considered that a 12-bedroom hotel model was more likely to be sustainable than the existing 43-bedroom model. The council's consultants noted that the trading performance of the hotel as currently operated is marginal at best, and that any increase in operating cost could result in the hotel sustaining a loss, and that the hotel could conceivably fall into administration again. In terms of housing mix, this is considered acceptable for the site, given the sustainable town centre location, limited amenity space, which is better suited to smaller units than larger family units. In terms of visual and residential amenity, it's considered that the proposed development would be of an appropriate scale, height, bulk, and mass, and the design would not result in material harm to the appearance of the street scene, and for the reasons set out in the officer report, officers consider that the proposed development would not result in material harm to neighbouring residential amenity. All of the units would have some private amenity space, either via private gardens or balconies. This is considered acceptable, and it is also noted that there would be some communal open space to the front of the apartment building. The sizes of the units and bedrooms would exceed the minimum sizes set out in the space standards. Moving to the recommendation, this would be, as set out at the end of the update sheet, that, subject to the applicant entering into an appropriate legal agreement within six months of the date of the committee resolution to grant planning permission, to secure the provision of contributions towards SUDs and open space management, maintenance, and subject to conditions 1 to 22, 24 to 26, and informatives as set out on pages 61 to 74 of the agenda report, amended condition 23, and ensure... and additional conditions 27 and 28, permission be granted. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Flo. Move on now to public speaking. I ask John Gray and Alastair Morgan to step forward. Gentlemen, as you know, you have four minutes from when you start talking.
I object to the proposed construction of the three mews cottages in the hotel's car park, which incidentally are not cottages. They are three-story, four-bedroom townhouses of monstrous proportions, and of a height, mass, bulk, and scale that will be overbearing and entirely out of character to their surroundings within the conservation area. The proposed design is an over-intensified form of development, and cannot be accommodated within the site. Please take into account the following material planning matters. Firstly, in 1999, a number of applications to build residential dwellings in the car park were rejected by both the council and the planning inspectorate. The conclusions are still relevant 20 years later. The current application does not address, and therefore overcome, the reasons for the 99 appeals being dismissed. In fact, it will materially and substantially worsen them, unacceptably harming the setting of listed buildings, the conservation area as a whole, and its characterful snippets. The greenwood, greensand-way footpath will be affected. Whilst the case officer is correct to note that the 99 developments were bulkier and bigger in mass, that was simply in terms of their footprint. The ridge heights of the 99 developments were 7.4 and 8 metres respectively, as compared to 10.3 for the proposed development, at least 30 per cent higher. Please also note that a material change has occurred since 99. Tudor Cottage is now a private dwelling which gives rise to additional material planning considerations. The first and second floors of the mews cottages will overlook straight into our garden and into my young children's bedrooms, resulting in a very grave loss of privacy and impact on our residential and visual amenity. Neither the case officer or the HBO has conducted a site visit, and as a result, the assessment on page 37 of the report is factually incorrect. There have also been material changes in planning and heritage policy that places great weight on conserving and enhancing heritage assets and avoiding harm. The second planning point is that, following the 99 appeal decisions, in which the inspector commented that the car park made a significant contribution to the setting of the listed buildings in the area, the openness of the car park was recognised and endorsed by its inclusion in the Hazelmere Town Council, Town Centre Conservation Area. The third planning point is that the impact of the application on the natural environment and local biodiversity should be taken seriously. The council's tree and landscape officer has concluded that the application will have a negative impact on the conservation area and on the significant trees which populate the site. To approve such an application will tarnish the council's environmental reputation. The existing trees are an essential feature of the area, they must be maintained. To conclude, I've submitted evidence to the planning officers proving that the mews cottages are not required from a financial perspective to fund the redevelopment of the hotel. I do agree that securing the hotel's future and the benefits of the new homes are important planning issues, but that should not be at the expense of planning and heritage principles and constraints, or the detrimental impact that the application will have on the conservation area and the local environment.
Chairman, Waverley has a policy to promote tourism. Policy LT2 ensures the retention of visitor facilities, which has not been met. Hazelmere needs tourism. It is unbelievable that the planning officer recommends scrapping 31 hotel rooms in Hazelmere. The minor conflict, as it is referred to in the documentation, is justified by allowing the construction of 16 expensive dwellings for rich people with no affordability. the construction of sixteen expensive dwellings for rich people with no affordable housing. The planning officer has accepted without question the self-serving, limited and biased reports commissioned and paid for by the applicant. The council's consultant bases much of his advice on such questionable evidence, which the planning officer has not acknowledged. There is no convincing evidence to demonstrate that a forty-three-room hotel is not viable. There are recent instances of ninety per cent-
Can you come to a conclusion, please, John?
I didn't start until way on that term, I've only been going a minute. There is no convincing evidence to demonstrate the forty-three-room hotel is not viable. There are recent instances of ninety per cent and over fifty per cent of rooms being let and visitors' comments in TripAdvisor note the ideal hotel location and say they will come back after refurbishment. Why was there only a two-month marketing period instead of the normal twelve during the 2017 administration? The current principal shareholder with little hotel management experience put it into administration having owned it for only two years. And why did he quickly buy it back again at a premium? Why has it continued to be run down? These are unasked and unanswered questions. Cirrus pub operations require typically thirty to forty parking spaces, only twelve would be left after residential development. If the cirrus model fails and the annex and parking are gone, the hotel will be lost. No turning back. The application is about property development, not saving the hotel.
Can you finish, please? You've had five and a half minutes.
I haven't.
You had four minutes between the two of you. That's what I said. Thank you.
Prof. Chou, thank you.
No, no, you've had your full allotted four minutes and way over. I've been generous. Thank you. I call on Malcolm Carter, councillor Malcolm Carter.
Evening councillors, Hazelmead Town Council objects to this application because it contravenes the NPPF and Waverley's Borough Council's own planning policies and many of the ideals the council states it upholds. I refer you to your policy LT2, retention of visitor accommodation. Clearly, the application does not comply with this policy on four fronts. Firstly, regarding viability and public demand, we understand that when part of a group, this hotel was only one which made profit. The changes in ownership, recent decrease in cost of rooms, uncertainty of its future by denying wedding and event bookings. This is most assuredly a public demand for the current facility, however, several public functions have been cancelled or moved due to planning uncertainty. Also, the current borrowing costs being included in the accounts all contribute to its unviability. If you wanted to explore Hazelmead, you would not stay in Farnham or Guildford. The one near establishment is not central to the town, it cannot be accessed on foot from the train station and you cannot walk from it to the town. Surely, a well-managed forty-bedroom hotel would bring more to the economy than a twelve-bedroom restaurant with rooms, which cannot serve the community for weddings, events and meetings. A larger hotel will also obviously employ more people than the proposed plan. Secondly, affordable housing policy AHN1, the plan allows for no affordable housing or financial contribution. An appraisal or report showing non-viability should not relax this policy. Thirdly, planning parking guidelines, policy ST1, the amended plan still four point five of a space short for the residences and six short for the restaurant. Reliance on the highway and public car parks should not be made since these are essential for other visitors and shoppers. Fourthly, impact on tree policy NE2, your own tree officer and Surrey Wildlife Trust have stated that the works to the rear will have a negative impact and that the loss of mature landscape features does not conserve or enhance the conservation area, which is not just about building but also the landscape. Generally, under NPPF, three cottages are overdeveloped and will cause a loss of amenity for neighbours as they will overlook Tudor Cottage and there will be a loss of privacy for the Muse. Nineteen new homes with their associated deliveries means that there are many more lorries. Unable to enter the grounds, they will park in the high street with the associated dangers of visibility for parking cars or pedestrians crossing the busy street. Finally, this proposal is also contrary to the emerging Hazelmead neighbourhood plan, which supports the development of more visitor and tourism-related businesses, not less. There have been letters and petitions of support for this application, but many of them are not from local residents and the petition focused on the development of the hotel to a restaurant. The development to the rear of the property has not been given equal airing. Therefore, with your own policies LT2, ANH1, ST1, NE2 and the NPPF contravened the loss of amenity to the town, its neighbours, as well as the loss to the local economy and vibrance of Hazelmead, we urge you to object.
Thank you, councillor Carter. Now call on Richard Angel. And again, you have four minutes from when you start speaking.
My name is Richard Angel. I am a local resident in Hazelmead. I have three children at school in Hazelmead and I am passionate about our town. I along with five local families acquired The Georgian from administrators in 2017. Our vision was to rescue the hotel and bring it back to life as a thriving, successful venture at the heart of our community. Like many businesses along the high street, The Georgian is struggling. It has not made a profit for over six years and the accounts are running a significant loss, putting it in a precarious position. The hotel, particularly the annex building to the rear, is in a poor state. It has suffered terribly due to competition from purpose-built budget hotels and the likes of Airbnb and needs significant financial investment. The introduction of new hotel accommodation, such as the sixty rooms at Lyth Hill, will add further competition. The Georgian currently provides cheap accommodation for overnight contractors who spend little time or money in the local community and runs at an average fifty-five per cent occupancy. If it is to survive, it needs a new focus with far higher occupancy levels enabling it to be self-funding, efficient and profitable. Our vision is to create a high-quality hotel that provides a gateway to the South Downs and attracts tourists that will spend in the area. Our plans will provide a significant financial boost to the local economy in both supply contracts and tourism. It was always our intention to bring forward a residential development to generate the financial investment required. Our plans for nineteen residential units will generate two million pounds to fund a refurbishment of the listed building for an exceptional boutique offer with fantastic food, beverage and enhanced versatile function space that is able to cater for a hundred and fifty guests, all for the betterment of Hazelmead. We recognise our neighbour, Alastair Morgan, has concerns and we've worked hard to address them with meetings and third-party reports, including daylight and sun path analyses and visual renders. Pre-application discussions with your officers centred on the Muse houses and significant design changes were made, including reducing the number from four to three. Ultimately, your own draft local plan has allocated the site for nineteen residential units. It makes efficient use of under-utilised brownfield land in the town centre and contributes to meeting your housing requirements away from the most sensitive green areas of the borough. For more than twelve months, we have engaged with officers and the wider community, adapting our plans to take on board constructive comments. Through this engagement, those who had initially expressed concerns began to support our plans, including many of the seventy-five objectors listed in your officers' report. You've also heard from John Greer from the Hazelmead Society. Putting his personal opinion aside, there has been no evidence from him that the society membership share his view. In fact, it is worth noting their chairman publicly backed the plans and stated that many of their members are excited by the proposals. He is not alone. There are two hundred and forty public representations of support and we have submitted a further four hundred and twenty-nine Hazelmead names as part of a petition backing the plans. Councillors, this evening you have an opportunity to transform a crumbling hotel that is at the heart of our community, to provide a busy, thriving hub for all local people and visitors to our town and to save The Georgian Hotel as a key historic asset along Hazelmead's High Street. The application complies with the local plan and is recommended for approval. We are passionate to create a positive legacy for our town. The Georgian is important to the community, above all the thirty employees who rely on the hotel for their livelihoods. The last few years have been a very uncertain time for them. Tonight, you can change that to ensure it is placed on a secure financial footing and give the town something very special for the long term. We hope that you will agree with the conclusions of your officers and for the benefit of our town, our high street and the hotel staff, grant permission this evening. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Okay, I did ask that you refrain from any form of demonstration. Now we move on, members, to the debate. Can I please ask that we don't reminisce on times we spent leaning against the bar or enjoying a meal here or there, that we stick to planning matters entirely? Members. Councillor Mullner.
Thank you very much, Chairman. Can I ask a question first? There are two trees indicated on the top edge of the three Muse buildings. Are they going to be retained?
I'm pretty sure they're not.
They're not going to be retained?
I don't think so.
Thank you for clarifying that. I think I can start off by saying that it's no surprise that this application has required a huge amount of time and effort to research and consider. It's an important application, that seems entirely right. It's also one of the more controversial ones and there's been quite a bit of expression of opinion and lobbying and with strong feelings on each side, which is why I think one must stick strictly to the planning issues. I divide this into two parts, the hotel and annex conversion and the three-bedroom terrace, I think are two separate issues, although obviously they're in the same application and therefore linked by that. I know there are concerns about some aspects of the internal arrangements of the hotel, but from my perspective, what concerned me initially was the fact that very little effort appeared to have been made in recent ownership to refurbish the hotel. And so, as has been said by everyone, I think, policy LT2 is clearly highly engaged and it's a very important policy. Hazelmead is one of the four large settlements in Waverley. This is the only large hotel in Hazelmead. And if we do grant permission, then we must accept that the largest source of bedrooms for those who wish to visit the town will have gone and gone almost certainly for good. So I think it's quite right to take LT2 very seriously. And I applaud the officers in the comprehensive report of drawing attention on page twenty-seven to the fact that the marketing evidence has been really quite scanty. I did realise before Christmas from the Adams Integrity Report that there were a number of bids and talking to the administrator in January revealed that they were about twenty and that some did indeed come from hotel groups who appeared to want to use it as a hotel in its present form. So we are left with the uncertainty about whether another hotel group might have come forward, no doubt bidding less than the current owners and one can understand why the administrator would feel it right to make sure the creditors got the best possible deal. But unfortunately, as I see it, it simply maintained the problem of no investment in the hotel. I did attend a meeting with the applicants and officers in February, which was extremely useful and the many questions I asked were answered very frankly and I appreciate that. And a point that came out, which certainly weighed heavily with me, was that no one could do anything with the annex. You in effect had two hotels and not one. One of twelve bedrooms, which could be improved and provide interesting accommodation and the rest were really of a sort of Travolodge type. And I could see how that could be an argument for setting aside to what is, in my opinion anyway, the very clear lack of compliance with policy LT2. I say that because LT2 is concerned with whether or not there's public demand for the hotel as it stands. And if you look at TripAdvisor, you see very quickly indeed that there's a lot of interest in coming to Hazelmead and the location of the hotel is a huge asset. And also, I might add, the food and the time and most of the time, the quality of the staff. So I'm left with the feeling that having gone around the annex in the site visit, I was less disappointed than I expected to be. And so I for one am not persuaded that LT2 can be ignored. I'll say, and I'll go over time briefly, Chairman, if I may, but not much. The other aspect is the Muse cottages, as they're called. They are very substantial, they're thirty-three feet high. And to keep matters brief, I will say that having thought very hard about it, I think the impact on residential amenity and the loss of parking are things which I feel are negatives. So I'll leave it there for the moment. As things stand and subject to what I hear from my colleagues, I don't think I can support the officer's recommendation. Thank you very much.
Councillor Knowles.
Thank you very much, Chairman. I'll try not to go over what councillor Mullner has already said, but as he has said, the application has resulted in many letters, both for and against the application and by lengthy reports in the Hazelmead edition of the Farnham Herald. But it does seem that mainly only the letters against refer to the planning issues. And I'm somewhat concerned by the officer's presentation and report because at our last meeting, the vice-chairman on a matter not in Hazelmead, raised the issue of do we constantly ignore policy or planning law? And we heard a list from the officer's presentation of things that are breached, the parking provision, two matters, the hotel and the new accommodation is not met, the harm to the trees, the previous inspector's report, and we can go on down the list of breaches that it suggested that we should just ignore. But this is a quasi-judicial committee and we're meant to take into account policies and the law, not every time we come along here be told, oh, it's okay, you can ignore that, which seems now to be the norm. Officers seem to consider that the inspector's decision of nineteen ninety-nine should be ignored, but that inspector ruled against development with a ridge height. Only two-thirds of the height is now proposed. I'm not into all these metres, I think it's about thirty-three feet if you look at this. And thirty-three-feet-high buildings at the rear will overlook the listed property at forty-one High Street and we've heard from the occupant, will look directly into the children's bedrooms of the property. As I've said, the parking proposed fails to meet the Waverley policy requirements. And of course, then further question is where will everybody who wants to go to the hotel for a function park? Because can't rely on the on-street parking. The enforcement comes out from Guildford a couple of times a week and the rest of the time that's full. And if there's a function on the Hazelmead Hall or elsewhere and the car park at the rear is full, in fact, car parks in Hazelmead often run at a hundred and ten per cent capacity already. So that can't be relied on and- So that can't be relied on and perhaps they're relying on everybody catching the last number 23 to Beijing Stope with leaves about half past 3. The parking is inadequate, totally inadequate. I'm also concerned that the statement regarding the fire vehicles will be unable to access the flats or the new houses due to the archway being too low. And I note there's a suggestion of one fire hydrant being installed to overcome that problem. My understanding for a block of flats on fire is that the brigade mobilised three or four pumps. I'd like to know how three or four pumps are going to connect to one hydrant. It's all very well taking risks and we all know that Jonathan Borestar signed off Grenfell Tower. Well, I'm not prepared to put my name to something that's got a hazard of this kind to it. And the Surrey officer obviously can see no problem with traffic or pedestrians, but coming out of the archway, you can't see either way until you're halfway across the pavement. And of course, that is used now, but we're told the use of the hotel is very, very low. So I wouldn't expect many vehicles to be going in and out, so 19 new properties, it would increase. I think the officers have given us too many reasons why it should be refused, for us to ignore them, just to say, well, this, 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 this one, but you can disregard each one. The build-up of reasons not to in the report makes it very, very difficult. Mr Angel has made a very good presentation regarding the hotel, but we are addressing the planning for 19 new dwellings and the planning law that controls that. And I think that is what we must consider. Unlike councillor Mullner, I will have difficulty in supporting the officer's recommendation.
Thank you, councillor. councillor Ral.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I appreciate your wish that we do not dwell upon evenings spent propping up the bar, which I confess I have done some 40-odd years ago in the Georgian. The Georgian is a central part of Hazelmere and I think I can probably say that a lot of people in Hazelmere don't want to see it go. I want to save the Georgian and I'm not convinced that this plan would do that. For a start, it has to be assumed that the proposed new life of the Georgian would work. It might well do under specialist management as proposed, but one does observe the last several years with the absence of any competition to speak of in the town, we have two pizza joints. There were three other restaurants in town, one of which was of national note and bloody expensive. They've gone. The Georgian had it to themselves for some years and yet they still can't make their restaurant work. We could spend a lot of time debating the various policies that we set down as a council and many of which I think are flouted by this application, and I'm amazed that the officers recommend acceptance. I'm not going to dwell on the others, I want to concentrate on the viability issue and the fact that we need a hotel. It's already been said that we're all trying hard to push Hazelmere more as a tourist destination. We need hotel rooms and this proposal at a stroke would reduce them by three-quarters. The viability report, which set as the local area, a circle of radius, not diameter, 12 and a half miles, we all know pi r squared is the formula, it's 490 square miles. It's ridiculous. If you're coming to Hazelmere, you don't want to stay in Farnham, attractive though Farnham is, or Billingshurst or Midhurst, you want to stay in Hazelmere. As I say, I've used the Georgian for decades, my kids do, my grandchildren shortly will. But in the recent years, I must have organised several dinners there, I mean, feasts of 120 covers, the biggest place in Hazelmere, for political reasons, charity reasons, fundraising reasons and private reasons, two funerals and a wedding. For my wedding recently, three years ago, although the Georgian knew about it in advance, they were too full to put up guests. We had to scrabble around the surrounding areas and find rooms in pubs and B and B. No one wanted to spend the time 12 miles away. And I do think the viability report is appalling, does not address the issue properly. Perhaps what is worse than that, I mean, I'm not an expert in these matters, but I can read the papers and I can think of lots of questions to ask. And the report on the viability report was thin and extreme. I'm surprised that our officers accepted it as a reasonable document. I don't. We know that since, in the single ownership it's had since the Hollyborne Group went, i.e. the last two owners, it's the same management, as we know. It has been profitable on a day-to-day basis. That's not just hearsay, it's evident. It only loses money now because it's saddled with the debt of the guys who bought it, which is rather difficult to explain. I understand, I'm not getting at the applicants on this point because it's a commonly used tactic in the property industry. You buy something, you can't afford it, you borrow loads of money and then that debt is considered part of the accounts of the thing you bought. It has to be because that's what the inland revenue does and of course, we all know, they rule. So I don't think that's very fair. The Georgian would thrive if owned by a hotel management company. I don't want to see it die. Once that block in the garden has gone, it's gone, you won't get it back. It reduced some years ago from a total of something like 50-odd rooms when Tudor Cottage was sold. Fair enough, it was perhaps a bit too much at the time. Of course, the Georgian kept the garden, I feel sorry for the present occupant who does not enjoy the splendid garden that his predecessors did because it's there as the car park with these huge four-bedroom cottages proposed for it. So I'm not going to dwell on the cottages or the amount of parking, I'm just questioning the viability issues. Lastly, it's the only place in town for running those feasts I mentioned, if I can call them that. The Lyth Hill, incidentally, will be a welcome, improved hotel, but it's a few miles away and it will be bigger and quite different. Amazingly, the Georgian had a larger capacity than the Lyth Hill until very recently. For the applicants to say that it increases the number of seats, I'm getting to the end, Mr Chairman, 250 is, I just don't know whether to laugh or to cry. It plainly does not. That's only if you include every bar stool in the place and the hidden rooms for private dining. If I'm organising a 120-seat dinner for a politician to come and speak at, and the last one, I was Rees-Mogg, so they're not too big guys, you can't have 100 people in this proposed plan, not even 80, possibly 60. At a stroke, this proposal reduces the attraction of the Georgian as an event location, be it dinners or weddings or funerals, and it severely reduces the amount of tourist accommodation in the town and we should reject it. Thank you.
Thank you. Just add that the applicants have said they can do 150, so we must take that on board. councillor Edwards.
You just have to look at the plans, Mr Chairman.
Okay, okay. councillor Edwards.
Thank you, Chairman. This is a very difficult application. When I first saw it, I was like, like my colleague, I was rather unhappy with it. And I've swayed back and forth since that time, so I can see both sides of the argument. Now, when we talk about attraction, the point is, in the real world, it's not attractive because people don't go there. I mean, I go there quite regularly for lunch, I have a very nice lunch, but the restaurant's empty because it needs upgrading because of the building, et cetera, et cetera. It needs a lot of investment, I understand that. The viability issue, well, the viability is the viability, if people aren't using it, it's not viable. If it's not attractive, people aren't going to go there, okay? There may be issues, and I'm glad to see that the officers have changed their view on the, by changing the wording in, I think it's on page 43, but the operators are the operators, whatever happens, and they don't want to throw money away. So they've come up with a scheme which they feel, and they're the owners here, not the Borough Council, not the councillors, not the opposition, it's the people who put their money where their mouth is. Now, I'm not, I'm not one for, how can I put it, losing rooms. But if the rooms aren't being sold at a reasonable rate, then it's not viable. Now, we did a site visit and I thought the rooms were all right actually in the block, I thought they were fine, you know, they had all the things you needed to stay overnight. I mean, they're not five-star by any means, but they were stayable. So it brings us back to is the hotel as it is fit for purpose?, question mark. I don't know how many of my colleagues have had lunch there recently on a regular basis. I go there quite regularly with my wife, so I know what goes on. Now, when we talk about hotel groups offering to buy it, I know somebody personally was involved in one of the bids and they were going to do almost exactly the same as being proposed by the current vendors. Okay, so I can't comment on all of them, but that's what I know, that's what I've been told. I have no reason to disbelieve that person. It is a location asset, it's sustainable area, it's ideally placed to have a thriving business and attract people to the town. So there's lots of things for it and there's lots of things against it. With regard to the archway that was being mentioned, the archway's always been there, it's been there a long time, it is what it is. So that argument I can't argue with. Comprehensive report from the officers, thank you very much, it's a fully comprehensive report, I thank the officers and I know they found it very difficult to come down one way or the other, so I thank you for that. You did a lot of hard work and it was nice to come on the site visit and see exactly what you were talking about. This proposal, as far as the owners are concerned, is viable. As it is, it's non-viable, so there's no argument about that. With regard to staying elsewhere, that's fine, but they're not staying in Hazelmere at the moment. You've got a 42-bedroom hotel that's not being used. Maybe you think you could operate it better or somebody could operate it better, I don't know. I'm not, I've never operated a hotel, but I've always had good service there. The Hollyborne Group, they are the ones that built the annex and the managing director, I have it from a valued member of staff, he built it, or the group built it, on the understanding that if it didn't work, they could turn it into apartments. That's the reason why they did it, they had an alternative plan. Boutique hotels work, look at the station house, thriving, very good, good restaurant, you know, you know. With regard to the attraction of the hotel and the views of the residents, it's split down the middle. Okay, sorry, I wind her up. Sorry, we're going on a bit. The younger generation in general want this to go ahead and the older generation don't. Now, I'm in the older generation, so I'll wait, I won't go into vote, but you know, you need to look at this as a saving of the Georgian Hotel, I think.
Thank you. councillor King.
Thank you very much, Chairman. I've been mindful of the time. I'm very interested to hear what the three relevant War Members had to say about this and I won't repeat it and councillor Edwards has his own views. My views are back, I'm afraid, are back with the planning rules and regulations, which is where we're coming from and where we're supposed to be here. I am really concerned still at the lack of affordable housing. We're proposing to increase the housing on this site by 19 with not one single solitary affordable property. And as we all know, the policy of this council is that there should be a 30% affordable housing provision and there is not one. Yet again, this is not the first time, I cannot remember the last time we approved something in Hazelmere with affordable housing. My, my great bet, ours of course, is the amenities of the residents who will live in this development. The apartments, I have no doubt will be high-end apartments occupied by more senior members of our community, but I am concerned about the Muse cottages, I can't understand how you can call them Muse cottages myself, but there you go. They are four-bedroomed family homes with very small amount of amenity space, car parking at the front, car parking next door and a small gardens at the rear, so I have concerns about that. And I also bothered about the trees being chopped down, I've got my sort of green hat on again, they, I cannot see how they can develop those Muse cottages, I agree with Beth Allen-Smith, they're most likely to go. But basically, I'll still come back to what the inspector said way back, it's on page 43 of the report and it's quoted so perfectly, that in the inspector's opinion, the open space made a significant contribution to the setting of the listing buildings and the character and appearance of the conservation area. Once we build on it, it's gone. So I am really uncomfortable. As far as the hotel is concerned, it certainly needs refurbishing, I too, obviously, like everybody else living in Hazelmere, I'm accustomed and have enjoyed many lonely lunches in there, all on my own in the restaurant. Superb food, excellent food at really reasonable prices and I can't understand why it's not heaving with people. Thank you very much, Chairman.
councillor Piper.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I have to concur with a lot of what my colleagues have said, but there are these three points that I have a problem with. And it's not to do with the conversion of the annex into apartments, but it's in the facilities that those apartments require, such as parking. There is not enough parking spaces for the residential or indeed the proposed for the hotel rooms. And they, it seems to be that if you say, well, there's a public car park next door, they can park in there, they can at a very expensive hourly rate, I'm not sure how hotel guests will feel about that. But also, it's a detriment of the other residents of Hazelmere who use that as a shopper's car park and for visitors. So I'm, you know, I believe that the parking guidelines should be met and if that means by reducing the number of units slightly in the apartments, then so be it. The Muse cottages, they are in my view overbearing in height, mass and bulk. And I cannot understand on page 37 of the report, where the officers say the Muse cottages would be sighted such that they are satisfied, they would not result in material harm to the neighbouring residential amenity of the occupiers of 41A High Street. Because the garden of 41A High Street is at the rear, where the grass area is, that's where you're going to sit out on a glorious Easter sunny weekend that we've just had, you know, and if you've got three-storey buildings and from the first and the second floors, you can actually peer into that garden, you are going to have a loss of privacy. So I would not be supporting this application on those grounds.
Thank you. Members, officers, do you wish to come in at this point?
Thank you, members' comments. I would say that the report that you have in front of you is a balanced report. Officers, it has been a difficult report to write. Matters concerning the appeal have not been ignored, we recognise they are of material consideration. In terms of the viability, the report is fairly comprehensive in terms of how it addresses those matters. those matters in the report itself. It's not unusual for policies of the council in planning to pull against each other, it happens all the time. The balance here for members is to do that, is that exact thing and arrive at that balanced judgment. So I just wanted to outline that in terms of the overall balance of the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Members, if we're done, I'll move to the recommendation which is on page five of the update sheet. Revert recommendation A is that subject to the applicant entering into the, an appropriate legal agreement within six months of the date of the committee resolution to grant planning permission to secure the provision of contributions towards subs and open space management, maintenance and subject conditions one to twenty-two, twenty-four to twenty-six. And yes, yes, yes. And informatives as set out on pages sixty-one, seventy-four of the agenda report and amended conditions twenty-three and additional conditions twenty-seven and twenty-eight, permission be granted. Those in favour, please show.
One.
Those against?
Eight against.
Thank you.
And no abstentions.
Thank you very much. The motion is lost then. Can I have an alternative recommendation, please? councillor Malina?
The permission be refused.
Councillor Knowles, thank you. Reasoning for that recommendation?
The ones I would put forward are failure to comply with policy LT two and in regard to the Muse cottages, the usual D one and D four impact on residential amenity. I would also like to bring in parking and perhaps the officers can advise us the best way of that because I think the loss of parking is material. But the principal one is D one and D four, the impact on residential amenity of the neighbouring properties.
councillor Knowles?
On the parking, I would suggest that in two instances it does not comply with the borough policy, both for the hotel and for the new dwellings. Also, damage to the trees was brought to our attention. Sorry.
Sorry, it's policy NE two.
Thank you. Paul?
Just generally, in terms of refusal, I would just generally advise members stay clear of what I would call technical matters. So certainly in terms of, you know, visual impact, conservation impact, those sorts of matters, but in relation to parking, I would suggest perhaps not to go to that point. Simply because it is a technical matter and those sorts of matters tend not to succeed in terms of appeal. Well, I think there are other matters that members could move towards which would strengthen that position.
councillor Coburn?
We sort of glossed over it, so correct me if we haven't missed this, but I thought one of certainly councillor King's reservations and mine is the residential amenity and the effect on neighbours, not just for the future occupiers of the Muse houses, but also for the existing occupant, the Tudor cottage. So I think residential amenity is something we certainly would like to stress.
Sorry, could I just ask a question? I mean, if parking more generally, I mean, the other concern I had is how little capacity there was to service the restaurant. I mean, if this were to go ahead and the restaurant would have to be thriving for it to make money because the number of rooms now being offered would be far, far fewer. If people can't park easily to get to the restaurant, is that not a problem? And at the moment, the parking has taken up completely with the apartments and the hotel guests. If the Muse cottages were not there, that parking would be available and would seem to me to greatly help the fortunes of any restaurant. It's not an aspect of parking which is a legitimate reason.
I would simply just advise members to stay away from what I call technical matters rather than move towards those other matters that we've discussed.
Okay. Can I ask Fiona to just go through the recommendations that we're, or conditions that we are putting forward?
So I've got failure to comply with LT two, contrary to policies D one and D four in relation to the impact on residential amenity of neighbouring property, policy, contrary to policy NE two, the trees, is that what you're saying? And you're also saying, and the contrary to affordable homes policy?
Members, are you content? Sorry. councillor Coburn, next.
No, I just wanted to query with Fiona, did you put in it's not just the effect on the existing neighbours, but also the effect for future occupiers of the Muse cottages
councillor Rand?
I think regarding the effect on neighbours, we, it's not necessary to dwell all the time on Tudor House, there are other properties there, almost as old, fronting the High Street, that would also be overlooked massively. So many, please put it in the plural.
Paul? Again, I would come back in relation to affordable housing and would advise, I see that as a technical matter. The policy does say that, in terms of the opportunity of looking at viability assessment and that we have a sign-off as well from our housing officer. So again, I would, simple advice again is to avoid technical matters in that regard.
councillor Rand?
Can I ask why we're getting this advice? Do you think the inspector might disregard it in any subsequent appeal as has happened?
Thank you, chairman. I think specifically in relation to affordable housing, Paul is right that there is reference in our policy to viability information and essentially the wording allows the authority to agree under provision of affordable housing in the event that we agree on the viability information that's been provided. In this case, we have negotiated the position which happens to be zero percent provision, but that position has been accepted by our housing manager. I understand that that position has been agreed following negotiation with the applicant, but if we were to rely on it at appeal, I think in order for us to successfully rely on that reason, we would have to go about discrediting the viability information. We would have to try and demonstrate that the information that's been provided which shows that affordable housing isn't viable, we'd have to try and unpick that, which, these are technical issues and aren't matters of planning judgment. So I think Paul is right to say that you should, you know, you should try and rely more heavily on matters that are ones of planning judgment over these more technical issues.
councillor Malina?
This raises quite an important point generally and we have, as councillor Coburn rightly said, seen a number of large applications offering many units where viability has been used as a reason for not building any affordable housing. I thought that if this committee, which is the council rather than the officers in this case, because we are having a committee meeting, take the view that the absence of affordable housing in the offering is a defect, they're entitled to come to that view. There has, we are not, we cannot, there was no proposal to meet AHN one and I do not see why we cannot say the failure to meet AHN one was another reason for refusal. There is a breach. The fact that the officers have taken what can only be a provisional decision, because after all, we take the decisions, not the officers when it comes to committee, are we actually getting anything wrong, Paul? If we think that affordable housing matters and we do not like the fact that it's not been offered?
It's not a question of the officers coming to a provisional view, it's simply a position that at appeal, it's better to stay away from technical matters and there is case law around this as well.
Sorry, how is the absence of affordable housing a technical matter? We have a policy, thirty percent, it's nineteen homes, there should have been six. If they can't deliver affordable housing, that is surely a negative in weighing up the planning balance. Surely that is right?
Lewis.
Thank you, chairman. I don't think it's so much the principle of whether or not they're providing affordable housing, but my view is that they are within the remit of our policy. The policy makes express provision, although it requires thirty percent as a starting point, it makes express reference to that provision changing if viability information is provided so as to show that the provision of affordable housing is not viable. That process has been carried out and officers, including the housing manager, have come to the view that affordable housing is not viable. Now, ultimately, you can disagree with our judgment here and decide to rely on it as a reason for refusal, but I would personally warn you against doing so because in the event that you did, I would say that there would be a risk of an inspector finding it to be unreasonable for you to have relied on that, given the fact that they have followed our policy insofar as they have provided us with the information that the policy allows them to provide us with and officers have come to an agreed position with the applicant with regard to that viability information, which is why I think if you wanted to rely on it, I think you'd be getting into the territory of trying to have to, you know, disprove the validity of that information. Again, if members are minded to rely on it, they can, but I would caution it, caution you against doing that and I think you do run the risk of having.
Thank you for the advice. Forgive me feeling slightly frustrated that affordable housing appears to be, is not even an optional extra these days. Applicants can just bring viability information which we never seem to be able to challenge and basically you can forget about it and I dare say that your advice is correct, but I'm not happy with the situation that we find ourselves in.
Lewis.
I think if there was some clear reason that made you doubt the viability information, then that may be a stronger ground for you to rely on, but I think in the absence of any clear reason for you to doubt the soundness of that viability information.
We're at cross purposes and we're wasting time. It is, to me, an application that comes forward for nineteen houses, if it does not, and one which offers six affordable housing and one that doesn't, it seems to be common sense to say the one that does offer affordable housing is much more desirable than the other. And I am surprised to learn that we can't use the absence of affordable housing as a perfectly valid reason. But if you tell me that it'll cause us trouble at appeal, well, I've no wish to have partial awards of cost, but I would love to take this up with you at a more relaxed time to really get to the bottom of this, as it seems weird.
Totally agree with that comment. councillor Coburn, then councillor Rand.
Sorry, I don't wish to prolong things very much. I just wanted to come back to the parking issue, simply because we're told there's an under-provision in both areas and so two under-provisions make for an even bigger under-provision of parking. And I would have thought that is an issue, both for the viability of the hotel going forward, but would also create difficulties again for the residents. So, you know, it does say quite clearly in the report that there is an under-provision of parking.
councillor Rand?
Thank you, mister chairman, that's, thank you, councillor Coburn, I've just doubled the points I wanted to make actually. On parking, I wouldn't stay in a hotel where I had to go outside and shelve coins out into a public car park meter before breakfast. It's terrible. I've been to other towns like Winchester where there's some lovely old hotels in the middle, bereft of parking, bereft of garden and you think, what a shame, it's gone. On the affordable housing, many planning issues are not as cut and dried, black and white as you might think, they require a degree of judgement and that's blended by the financial aspects, money comes into it quite a bit. And having tried to drive a coach and horses through the viability reports earlier, I'm surprised that you deploy that as an argument. I don't think the viability reports are worth the paper they're printed on and I think a lot flows from that. Thank you.
Paul, do you want to come back on the parking before we move to the amended recommendation?
Again, I would just simply say in making a case for refusal, it's better to stay away from technical matters and I would treat parking as a technical matter in this context, given the comments that we've had from the highway authority.
councillor Knowles?
I'm sorry to go on about the parking, but I understand what Paul has said, but I would like to be sure that when the papers go into the inspector, that the fact that it was in the opening report, two under-provisions of parking were highlighted to members and obviously we've taken that into account and for it to suddenly disappear seems rather ridiculous.
Right. councillor Malina and councillor Knowles, you're prepared on the second, do you want to add anything or are we taking Paul's advice on affordable homes? Do you want to hear the conditions again that we are putting forward for refusal? Fiona's working very hard here.
Sorry. Thank you, chair. I'll give him a bare shot. Reason one, the proposal by virtue of scale, bulk and form would result in unacceptable harm to the setting of the designated heritage asset, grade two listed building, the Georgian Hotel on forty-one High Street and the conservation area. There are no identified public benefits that would outweigh less than substantial harm to the designated heritage asset, the proposal would fail to accord with policy HA one and the local plan part one two thousand and eighteen. Reason number two, the proposed development would result in unacceptable harm to the residential amenity adjoined by the existing residents, contrary to policy D one and D four. Reason three, the proposal would result in the unacceptable loss of trees that make a positive contribution to the character of the area, which would have a detrimental impact on the visual amenity and character of the area. The proposal would therefore be contrary to policy D one and D four and D seven of the Waverley Local Plan two thousand and two and NE one and NE two of the Waverley Local Plan two thousand and eighteen, part one. The proposal would result in the unacceptable loss of the hotel use within the town centre, there would be contrary to policy LT two of local plan two thousand and two and TCS one of local plan part two, part one two thousand and eighteen. And yeah, I mentioned LT two. I think, I think that's it. Thank you.
Just you put LT two at the top.
That's nine in favour of refusing.
Thank you.